Good morning and welcome to the September 18, 2018, Brevard County Commission Meeting. We have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. If you'd please bow your heads with me for a moment of silence. Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Could you stand and pledge allegiance with me? I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America, a republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner, I have two sets of meetings to approve, August 14 and August 21. Can I entertain a motion?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Barfield.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes 4-0. We're moving into resolutions, awards, and presentations. Commissioner Smith, I believe you have the first resolution, sir.
Yes, I do. Do we have someone from the Second Harvest Food Bank here? How do I know that? Just stand at the podium, and I'll read this, and then we'll give you a few minutes to talk about what you guys do. Thank you for being here. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of great concern in Brevard County and throughout the United States, and whereas Brevard County is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our state and to provide additional resources that Central Florida residents need, and whereas Brevard County is committed to working with Second Harvest Food Bank of Central Florida to educate our residents about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues, and whereas more than 82,000 Brevard County residents and 22,000 Brevard County children rely on food provided by the members of the Second Harvest Food Bank of Central Florida each day. Those are some big numbers, folks. Whereas the members of Second Harvest Food Bank of Central Florida distributed more than 6.8 million meals to Brevard County in 2017. That's a big number, too, 6.8 million meals. Through its network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations. And whereas food banks across the country will host numerous events throughout the month of September that bring awareness and attention to the problem of food insecurity while encouraging involvement and efforts to end hunger in our local communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 2018 as Hunger Action Month in Brevard County, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 18th day of September 2018. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept this resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 4-0.
Sure. Thank you so much for the proclamation and the awareness for hunger. Those are some big numbers. We still estimate that one out of six individuals in our county are food insecure, not sure where their next meal is going to come from. So our mission is to make sure that all available food gets to those that are in need. So we have a ways to go. So thank you for the awareness. Please donate to your local pantry and food bank. So, thank you very much.
And keep up the good work. Wait, wait, wait a minute.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chris Hammack, are you here, sir? I'm going to read this resolution, and if you want to address this, we would love that.
Absolutely.
Whereas the American Legion was chartered and incorporated by Congress on September 16, 1919, as a patriotic veterans organization devoted to mutual helpfulness, and whereas the American Legion is the largest wartime veteran service organization with more than 2.5 billion members, both men and women, and over 14,000 American Legion posts worldwide. And whereas the American Legion is committed to mentoring youth, sponsoring wholesome community programs, advocating patriotism, honor, and promoting strong national security, and supporting active service members and veterans, and whereas the American Legion is assisted in their mission by the great women of the American Legion, working side by side to administer hundreds of volunteer programs and raise money to support its own programs, and whereas the observance of the American Legion Day provides an opportunity to recognize legionnaires at the 15 posts located in Brevard County and thank them for the numerous contributions to our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize September 16, 2018, as the American Legion Day for upholding the ideals of freedom, democracy, while working to make a difference in the lives of fellow Americans. Done, ordered, and adopted in this regular session on the 18th day of September 2018, I make a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, passes 4-0. Sir.
Yes, ma'am. Proud to be a legionnaire. We have a 140-mile-long district that's stretching from the northern edge of Brevard County all the way to about the first mile into Martin County. 25 active posts of over 8,777 legionnaires. 15 of those active posts are in Brevard County. So the things that the American Legion does that we still do and we still strive to do, the Montgomery G.I. Bill, Post 9/11 G.I. Bill, all that started out as a Servicemen's Readjustment Act years ago, all started by the American Legion. Our U.S. flag code started by the American Legion, the legislation written. And there's so many benefits we enjoy today that a lot of people don't realize. So we're out here carrying the fight, continuing to serve, and we're proud to receive this proclamation. And I'd like to also bring my department membership, Department of Florida Membership Chair, who helped get this ball rolling, and my personal post commander, Gene Baker, up to, if they could just have a minute, if they have anything to say.
Certainly.
Please, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of our department commander, Diane Boland, for you recognizing us. I know she's going to be real excited. She is a member of our post here in Brevard County. She's the first female to hold the office in 100 years. So it's a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I don't like to speak a lot, so that's pretty much going to be all I have to say since they said everything else. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, and thank you for your service.
Camille? Okay. Camille, I'm going to read this, and then I'm going to give you the podium. Whereas the white cane demonstrates and symbolizes the ability of every blind person to become self-reliant and to achieve a full independent life and the capacity to work productively in competitive employment, and whereas every blind citizen in our state has the right to carry a white cane which allows them to move freely and safely from place to place, thereby making it possible for the blind to fully participate in and contribute to our society. And whereas every citizen should be aware that the law requires that motorists exercise appropriate caution when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane, and whereas Florida law calls upon all public and private employers to be aware of and utilize the employment skills of our blind citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capacities. And whereas the state of Florida, through its public agencies and with the cooperative assistance of the National Federation of the Blind, can look forward to continued expansion of employment opportunities for and greater acceptance of blind persons in the competitive labor market, and whereas the determination of blind people to be independent and enjoy boundless freedom is enhanced with the growing use of the white cane. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim October 15, 2018, as White Cane Safety Day in Brevard County, and calls upon all citizens to recognize the white cane as an instrument of safety and self-help for blind pedestrians on our streets and highways. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 18th day of September 2018. Madam Chair, I propose that, and make a motion that we accept this resolution.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 4-0. Good morning, Camille.
Good morning. I would like to say thank you to the commissioners for this proclamation. The white cane, as is stated in the proclamation, is our symbol both of freedom and independence. It's a symbol and a tool. What we do in the National Federation of the Blind of Florida and the Melbourne Space Coast Chapter is to change what it means to be blind. There are so many fears in our society about going blind, and we're here to tell you blindness is not the characteristic that defines you or your future, and we raise those expectations of blind people because they create obstacles between us and our dreams. We believe that we can live the life you want, and so can you, and blindness does not hold you back. What we're doing for our White Cane Safety Day celebration is a car and bike show on October 13 at the Fountains of Melbourne. The public is absolutely encouraged to come and attend. It's free admission. For the public, we'll have food and music, and there'll be some prizes given out to several of the cars in different categories. So come and enjoy a day from 10 until 2 at the Fountains of Melbourne on Stack Boulevard. I'm actually joined here today by our chapter secretary, Julia Savage, and board member Arlene Nalty, and let's see if they have something they may want to say to all of you as well. I guess we're okay. Thank you so very much for the proclamation.
Okay. Commissioners, we have consent agenda next. Would anybody like any of these items to be pulled and heard separate? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes 4-0. We are at public comments. Mr. Charles Tovey. Okay. I don't believe Mr. Tovey is here, so I'm going to close public comments, and we're going to move into public hearings. Item H1.
This is the TAFRA hearing, an approval for American Eagle Bonds. This item has a somewhat lengthy script, which I'll begin at this time.
Thank you, ma'am.
This is a hearing for purposes of the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, referred to as TAFRA, as required by Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended, regarding the possible issuance by Capital Trust Agency of one or more of its senior living revenue bonds, American Eagle Portfolio Project, and an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed 275 million for 17 projects. Two of the 17 projects are in Brevard County. One is the Titusville Project, and it's on 16 acres at 1800 Arison Street, and includes approximately 134 beds. The Melbourne Project is on six acres at 2680 Croton Road and has 74 beds. The public purpose for this bond issue is presented as providing and preserving gainful employment and making significant contribution to the economic growth of the local community, promoting commerce within the state, and providing safe, decent, and accessible housing for the elderly. The county is not responsible for bond payments. This issue has been confirmed by outside bond counsel and the county's financial advisor, and those emails are provided in your package. At this time, there is a public comment opportunity. Are there any persons who wish to speak for or against the bonds or the project to be financed thereby? If so, please come to the podium.
I have one comment card.
You have one comment card?
I do. Mr. Rick Lower. This is for questions only. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Let the record reflect there are no public comments. We are also required to inquire whether or not written communications have been received by any board members, administrators, or the clerk.
No, ma'am.
Let the record reflect no written comments, communications have been received. Madam Chair, you may now conclude the public portion of this item and return the item to the board for discussion.
Thank you, county attorney. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we approve the TAFRA.
I have a motion by Commissioner Barfield. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tabaya. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes 4-0. Thank you. Item H2.
Good morning, commissioners. This is a temporary use acknowledgment for the Brevard County dredging project in the Grand Canal muck removal. We're looking for authorization for a temporary use of a county-owned site to de-water and handle muck from the Grand Canal Muck Removal Project. It's just short of half a million cubic yards of muck to be removed from the system, and we have a map of the project area that may help. The canals that are included in the current project that would be approved with this temporary use authorization. So we had received some concerns from the public about the geographic area that would be used for this site. So this map shows the geographic limits of the canals that would be dredged potentially under this authorization. We intend, if you approve this item today at your next regular meeting, we would bring back authorization to advertise to go to bid for this project, and it would be for this area that's shown there in the yellow highlighting.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, I have three comment cards. I'm going to go ahead and call. Most certainly. Oh.
Don, can we get this up on the, it'd be nice for everybody to be able to see that, for the public to see that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Don.
Mr. Craig Wallace?
Good morning, commissioners. Craig Wallace, who live on Tortoise Island, which is kind of the epicenter for the dredging project here. We on the island, speaking for the homeowners association, definitely support this muck removal project. We witnessed some of the worst fish kills in Banana River several years ago, and anything we can do to clean that up is great. The property to be used for this transfer site is adjacent to property owners on Tortoise Island, so we definitely concerned about how it is used. We have worked very closely with Virginia Barker and her staff to understand. They've supplied us with all the answers to all our questions. We applaud their work on this, and we agree that, you know, this should be used for this purpose. However, our concerns are, one, the length of this project, anticipated now to be two to three years. Could, as we know, projects can go longer than what are anticipated. So the property owners along the boundary of this transfer site are concerned about it lasting anything longer than three years. So we've expressed those concerns. We know this has to be renewed every year, renewed, or re-applied for every year, so we'll have a chance each year to do that, and we will. The other concern we have is the operating hours for this. It is stated that it would be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We had asked for it to be excluding weekends and holidays. However, we understand that there is an exception. The only reason for the exception to that would be because of, you know, unscheduled events such as hurricanes or in preparation, therefore. They have agreed that they will supply us with communications to that effect, so we really appreciate that. So basically, we feel we are pretty well informed. The only other concern we have is this site has been the target of several opportunities to transform it into something other than what it was initially designated for when it was given to the county. It's supposed to be an environmental site and just basically be left as is. So it is the plan to restore this site to that originally planned after the transfer operation is complete. However, we want to make sure that there is no question that that land use will remain in that designation. We understand this is a temporary use agreement, and it will, and is supposed to return to that, but we just want to make sure the county understands that in no way are we giving up our rights to this property to be used as it was intended. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pete Silva? Thank you, sir. Mr. Patrick Walters?
Good morning. My name is Patrick Waters. I have a home on 410 Sparrow Road, or Sparrow Drive, excuse me. I also have one in Vieira, so Commissioner Smith, you have two of mine. One, the one in Satellite Beach, the property taxes do increase every year because it's not homesteaded. I thought I'd just pass that on to you folks. I have a couple of questions. I don't understand, I got the letter in the mail because I have a home within 1,000 yards or whatever the limit was to the Satellite Beach site, and I had a couple of questions about, was it discussed about what they were going to do, the consequences, were there going to be orders, smell, orders from the dredging, et cetera? The, will the, I live on the fingers that go out there, and my access to the Banana River is right through that area of what I believe the site is. Again, to the gentleman earlier, the site is gorgeous right now, and will it be returned to that? Will that access be closed or open during this timeframe? And have these things been discussed, or are you guys just saying you want to do this? And three years is awfully long time. We already have enough trouble in Satellite Beach with the groundwater and the concern about the fire retards from Patrick Air Force Base and other things that are cancer-causing deals. I'm concerned about my home value, if that's going to be a mess, and if there's any smells for three years, in addition to the concerns we already have with the groundwater in Satellite Beach. So I wondered, have any of those questions been asked or answered, or what's the program?
Thank you, sir. I wrote them down in a few minutes. I'm suspecting we're going to address those items.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't hear where the damn.
I, we, I believe we wrote them down, and I think in just a few minutes, we'll be addressing those items.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, one other issue.
Yes, sir.
This is a little off-target, but the reason that these things, the canals being dredged, is because of all the stuff that creates muck. My understanding is that grass from lawn clippings, et cetera, create muck. Is that true? I can look on my canal every Saturday morning, and landscapers blow grass into the canal. I have sent a letter to the Satellite Beach Commissioners, got no answer about anything, and I was wondering, is part of the expensive program we're doing and the additional money we're paying to clean this, are there going to be efforts made to control landscapers that do lawn treatment in that area?
Well, I think that's definitely something we'll have to look into, sir, because you're not allowed to do that. So, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Keep up the fight, John.
Okay, that's Commissioner Smith, that's last of our comment cards. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention that this has been a topic of conversation many, many times, the mowing of lawns and the clippings going into the canals and the air blowers blowing clippings into the canals. It's so bad that back in '16, when we had the fish kills in the canals, we have video of homeowners cutting their grass, and the grass is going straight into the canals. This is during and after the fish kill. So it's a real education process, and obviously, it's a long-term educational process, because if what you're saying is current, then people aren't learning very quickly.
I'm sorry, sir, we can't talk from out there, because nobody can hear you up here, so.
Finished.
Okay. Ms. Barker, did you want to address any of those items? Because I know, when I talked to you the other day, you had mentioned about doing a testing on the muck to make sure that we weren't causing harm, so.
Yes. So to Mr. Wallace's last statement about site transformation, and one of the reasons that we're going this route with a temporary use authorization under the current zoning class is so that the community doesn't need to be concerned that we're changing the zoning to make it appropriate for muck dredging activities. This leaves the zoning the way it currently is, and you are only authorizing a temporary use that is inconsistent with the zoning. To Mr. Waters' comment about the grass clippings, we have recently contracted for a grass clipping campaign with half-cent sales tax money. That was one of the five top priorities for something that we need to do a lot more outreach on, and, you know, exactly how do we figure out what is the target audience? Is it just the mow-and-blow, excuse me, contractors? Is it also private citizens? And what is the best way to reach those different audiences? And so we're partnering with the five counties along the lagoon, coming up with a campaign that will be lagoon-wide, and so we're looking forward to getting that underway. There's a survey going on right now to get started on that. Chairman, your question was about the testing. We will also be testing for the PFOS and PFOA, the perfluorinated compounds that have been a concern in the Satellite Beach area. We'll be testing for those in the muck and in the water in the canals. be testing for those in the muck and in the water in the canals. We hope to have those testing results back by the end of October, so well before this project gets awarded to a construction contractor to proceed.
Okay, and one more question that was asked. How long has the process of this plan been being worked on?
Five, on the order of five years in terms of, you know, permitting and design. It's been a long, long time coming.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Several community meetings.
Commissioners.
I would like to make a motion to approve this temporary use permit.
A motion on the floor by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 4-0. Thank you. We're moving into item H3.
Item H3 is a request for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct the second public hearing to approve revisions to Chapter 62, Article 6, Division 4, Subdivision 7, Section 62, 1511, to remove the maximum density requirements in the general tourist commercial zoning classification. You all remember that we brought this item before you at the last meeting, at your last regular meeting for the first reading, and the subject of removing the density was if the property was located on an arterial or collector road, that it was adjacent to the BU1 or BU, I'm sorry, TU1 zoning classifications on at least two sides, and there was another property with BU1, BU2, or TU1 within 500 feet of the subject property for the rezoning, or for the hotel use. As we have gone through the legislative process, yesterday, we took this matter to the LPA. They had a pretty extensive conversation around the proposed changes, and their recommendation to the board was to remove, or to basically go forward with, if you have the community commercial, future land use designation, that there would be no density require, excuse me, requirement in the code for those parcels. So that's a little bit of a change of what we have presented. That came to us late yesterday afternoon, so we didn't have an opportunity to bring that to you. You could go forward with, as presented, it would just affect the TU1, subject to those criteria. If you wanted to expand that, there was also some conversation about expanding it to affect the TU2 zoning classification, and there was some conversations around the BU1 classification. And we allow hotels in three zoning classifications, the BU1, the TU2, and the TU1, which is the one that's before you today. Happy to answer any questions, if you all have anything.
Okay, sir. So the LPA came back and recommended that we remove the BU?
They recommended that you eliminate the locational criteria that was presented, and you just rely on the future land use designation.
Okay, that makes sense. I'd be interested in hearing the opinion of the commissioners, but I think that is still going to get what we want it to get done countywide without causing harm to an area where we typically wouldn't have no density requirements on hotels. So my recommendation is going to be that we re-advertise and bring this back later. Commissioner Tobias, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a couple of questions. First of all, would be to the county attorney, the current county attorney, because the second one would be to the former county attorney. Would this require a re-advertising process if we were to accept the LPA recommendation and do away with the requirements for not only the TU1, but the TU2, as well as the BU1 zoning?
Yes.
Thank you. And, can I ask the former county attorney, Mr. Knox? Since this was an issue that was brought to light by one of your clients, can you tell us how the LPA recommendation, if any, would have an impact on your client?
Well, Scott Knox, Whidraven Mall Co., 1900 West New Haven, Melbourne. My client is applying for rezoning and the land use designation change, and you'll see them again in October. Assuming that that were to go forward and be passed, it would probably be helpful to them to actually do it this way, because it broadens the areas where the density restrictions are removed, and it keeps it at CC, though, but, so there aren't that many parcels that have CC and BU1, which is what my client is looking for, so it would probably help them.
Thank you.
Finished, sir. Commissioner Barfield?
Whenever we make a change like this, I get concerned about unintended consequences down the road. Is there anything you can foresee that would cause any kind of certain type of land, or anything that could cause a trouble with this?
I think that the, when you look at the hotel use now, it's limited to just a handful of parcels. I think, as Mr. Knox mentioned, you have BU1 throughout the county. It's a very common commercial land, I mean, a commercial zoning classification. Limiting it to the commercial, community commercial land use, though, does restrict it a little bit, where you have more commercial nodes. The requirement for community commercial is what, 10 acres of land? Is it 10 acres? There's certain criteria in the comp plan that requires, or establishes criteria, locational criteria for the commercial, community commercial, and it's a larger tract of land. I believe it's up to 10 acres. There's certain requirements that it has. It has to have location on a collector or arterial roadway, so it's already accounting for some of the items that you have, that you all were proposing in the code change.
Okay. I'm, I, oh, you snuck that in. Yes, sir.
No, no, I'll wait after cards.
Okay, I did have a request from Mr. Knox, a gentleman that's here from Pensacola, would like to speak, so I'm going to go ahead and call comment cards.
Scott Knox, again. My client, Anthony Lopes, is here, and he would like to say something to the board, so he gets a little feel for why they're seeking these kinds of changes.
Mr. Lopes?
Actually, Pensacola is not a bad place, but I'm from Franklin, Tennessee, at the moment. My name's Anthony Lopes. I'm here in reference to the item that we're discussing. My partner, Gene Lamondo, and I own two acres of property down in Miko on 8480 and 8490 U.S. 1. We've owned that property together jointly for 38 years. My family was involved with that property four years prior to that, so I've been involved with the property now for 42 years, okay? And in those 42 years, we have maintained the property. We've made repairs to the property because of hurricane damage. We have put quite a bit of money into the property to maintain it, upgrade it, and keep it looking good. At one time, I was involved with the ownership of the marina across the street, which is now the Sebastian River Marina. At that time, it was called the Neptune Marina. Doug Hillman is here. Doug is now the owner of the marina, and during the entire time that we've owned this property, we've seen very little development on the south end of Brevard County, especially in Miko. We've seen most of the development now go south of the Sebastian River Bridge in Indian River County, with very little bleeding over into Brevard County. The most recent is the Sebastian Inlet Marina, who did a ton of work to his building. So, you know, there's a little bit going on, but not much. But we think there's a reason that we could have a development in that area, and I'll tell you why. Hold on one second. His computer to go to sleep for a little bit. Okay. So what are we trying to accomplish? Right now, the property is owned, it has three different zonings. The front of the property is on BU1, the middle of the property is on TR3, the back of the property is on TR2. So it's a little convoluted. It's hard to utilize the property effectively with those type of zonings. So what are we trying to do? What we're trying to do is, we're looking at, after years of looking at this and seeing that there's not one major hotel flag between Vero Beach, and actually, I did it last night, Melbourne, Florida, on U.S. 1, not one major hotel flag, except for Best Western. You're talking about a beautiful, beautiful area, beautiful views, beautiful vistas, great boating, but there's not one major hotel other than Best Western on U.S. 1. So we think there's a need now to fill that void. And what is the void? Where would the people be coming from? There's a group of people that come over regularly and have been coming over regularly from Orlando to go boating. Sebastian area, the Sebastian area, the Sebastian inlet is a perfect place for them to boat. There's also numbers of people who come up from South Florida, who spend the weekend up in our area. Now presently, they're staying at Captain Hiram's in Sebastian, which is Indian River County. So those tourist dollars are parking themselves in Indian River County. We'd like to take that and try to create a tourist destination to have them spend that money in Brevard County. Now, why do we think it's possible now? We think it's possible now because, as you all know, the new exit's going in on I-95 on Miko Road, and the, it's funny, I'm staying at the Holiday Inn Express on Malabar Road. I remember 35 years ago, before that exit was built, it was nothing, there was nothing there on Malabar Road. Now it's booming. I think eventually, if you look forward, you'll see that that's a possibility for farther south in Brevard County, because we'll be, people from Orlando will be easily able to get to the South Brevard area, and then the people coming up from South Florida will have an alternative to North Indian River County. Now, what benefit, now, let me back up for a second. This is important, and I know this is an issue that people before us were discussing it. This is only possible because they're putting a new sewer line in Miko. I'm sure you're all aware that there's a sewer line under development in Miko as we speak, and our goal, when available, is to tie into that sewer line. No project that we're looking at could possibly happen without a sewer line. We're very aware of the environment. We own property, we don't just own this property. We own property literally around the corner, residential property, a house and a vacant lot, which we intend to build on and live in, and we understand the issues with the Indian River lagoon. We understand the algae bloom issues. We understand how it kills the seagrass, and that's necessary for fish to spawn and for manatees to eat. So we're extremely concerned about the environment. We love the area because of the boating potential, and that's the Indian River.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, your time's out.
Oh, time's out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doug Hillman?
Good morning. Doug Hillman, 8525 North U.S. 1. We call it Sebastian, but it's Miko, Florida. My wife and I purchased the oldest marina in South Brevard 26 years ago, coincidentally, right across the street from Anthony Lopes and Gene Lamondo. Slowly but surely, we've tried to redevelop the marina, and it's been quite a place, quite a location. We love the area. I've been in the business 51 years. We've owned marinas in other counties, in Indian River County, and we love what's going on in Brevard County. To back up, the reason I'm here is I'm 100% behind Anthony and Gene in their development. We think it's time for South Brevard to get some revenue, get some tax revenue from, we're missing it. We watch it happen all the time. People come in from Orlando, they stop at our place for boating, and they go and stay in Indian River County. Doesn't make any sense. Really doesn't. There's just no place near us that works. Again, we love the county. We like to see it developed responsibly. People don't have to tell me about the environment. I've lived in the environment where the water, where the tide changes for a long time. We're committed to that, and we'd like to see the development happen. It has to be guided. It has to be done according to the current structure. I think what they're looking for is well within keeping of responsible development, and we'll see how it goes. The sewer is, we've been paying property taxes to the county for a long time. Basically, Miko is out there on the ragged edge. We have real estate, and that's about it. We have no water. We have no sewer. This is a welcome development for us, and what we hope is a future expansion in South Brevard County. Any questions?
No, sir.
We're 100% behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tobias, that a new light?
Just the one after the cards, whenever you get a chance.
We're all through with the cards, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think your suggestion to look at the LPA recommendation and put this out for advertisement again would help alleviate, or at least give us more time to look at potential issues that, you know, Commissioner Barfield had mentioned. So after everyone gets the opportunity for discussion, I'd like to make a motion to re-advertise the LPA recommendations that you suggested.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, and I would second that as well. I just want to point out, we have the need. It's been brought to our attention that not much is going on down in South Brevard in the way of tourists. We've got the sewer that will be available, so that will protect the environment, and we have the desire, by you gentlemen, to bring business to that area. So I'm a big proponent of business. I'm a big proponent of jobs, and I think that this would be a great asset to South Brevard County. But I think we need to look at the whole county, and so that's why I would support and table the second.
Thank you, sir. I am ready for a motion, I believe.
Chair, I'll make the motion to re-advertise the LPA recommendation to expand to TU1, TU2, and BU1.
Okay, a motion to re-advertise.
Second.
By Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes 4-0. Thank you. We have no new business, so we're going to move in, I'm sorry, unfinished business. We're moving into new business. Item J1?
Item J1 is a request for the Board to consider the Special Magistrate's recommendation to reduce a fine that accrued from $14,125 down to $4,186, and release the lien upon payment in full for Code Enforcement Case 16 CE 00116 at 2530 Palm Lake Drive, Merritt Island, Florida. This was a case that involved work without permit. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, sir. I do have one comment card on this, and Commissioners, I would like to go ahead and call that comment card. Ms. Susan Felipe? Hello, ma'am. If you'd state your name and address for the record.
Susan Felipe, 2530 Palm Lake Drive, Merritt Island, Florida. I'm sorry, I'm really nervous about this. I would not be standing here today if I was not lied to from the beginning. My husband told me he took care of it, took care of the fines, the permits, and the blueprints, and he never did it. He, and the only reason why I was made aware of it was because my neighbor looked on the computer and informed me there was a fine, and that it was accruing, and the minute I found out, I picked up the phone to correct it. And it took me two months to correct the situation. It should not have ever gotten that far, because I was not aware of it. My address was changed, because my son moved out of my house and moved to another house, and all my information was going to that house, and he was not even living there. Can I give you this letter from my neighbor that she wrote?
Sure. Did you want this back, ma'am, or can I give it to the clerk's office?
No, you can keep it.
Okay.
I just, this would never have happened if I had known. This would never have happened if I had known what was going on.
Okay, commissioners?
So what is the actual... I'm asking Tad this. What is the actual... The actual costs were $1,711, and they paid the $350. So the actual cost of us enforcing this was $1361?
Yes, sir. That's the remaining cost that we have invested in the case.
Okay. And it was originally, the fine was up to $14,000, then went down to $4,100. I'm fine with just bringing what it cost us to do the enforcement, which is $1,300. I mean, that's much better than $14,000, and that's what our cost of doing this would be. So I'd make a motion that we go with the $1361.
Do you have a motion for $1361? Do I have a second? Commissioner Tobias, is that your light, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I won't be voting for this, and it's not that I'm in favor of the $14,125 fine. I would just be comfortable with the special magistrate recommendation, which is $4186. This is an individual that the county pays that goes into this a lot more than the information that we have here. I understand the situation, and I think the magistrate diminished the fine by, it looks like, more than two-thirds. So just if we go through with the actual cost, which is $1711, I would be against that, but that does not necessarily mean I'm for the $14,125. It would just mean I would be consistent with the special magistrate recommendation, which is $4186.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Barfield, I'd like... Barfield. Mr. Tobias, I would like to hear your reasoning behind the $4186 because I'm not sure what to do with this. I feel for this lady, and $1711 looks a whole lot better than $4,100, and $4,100 looks a whole lot better than $14,125. If there are some issues here that you think substantiate $4186, then I would be willing to listen to those.
Madam Chair?
Please.
Thank you. And, you know, Commissioner Smith brings up a very good point, but my suggestion of the $4186 is rooted only in the fact that that is the recommendation of the special magistrate. I can't speak to the special magistrate's determination. I just know that this is an individual that is skilled in this type of venue and makes recommendations to us. So he or she went through more time and effort than what we have the opportunity to do up here. So it's... I wish I, you know, I wish I had an answer for you. I got actual cost plus 20% of the fine. I think is what I have in my notes. But it's just a substantiation of the process, more than the rationale behind the number, and that's merely it. I would certainly respect your opinion, should you go with the actual cost or the special magistrate. I think, given the circumstances, the fine of $14,125 is way too much. I think we all believe that. It's just the difference of that $1,700 versus $4,100. And sorry, I don't have a better answer for you. It's just what the special magistrate recommended.
Well, I'm just reaching for reasoning. I'm more inclined to go with the $4186, simply based on the fact that the magistrate did hear all the issues, heard the reasonings, and reduced the fine substantially. And I have to respect the magistrate. The magistrate did what the magistrate's supposed to do, look at the evidence and make a determination. So I would be inclined to support the $4186.
My thought on this, just is the house in your name? I think just due to the fact, soon as she found out, she quickly made remedy. So I know there's a certified letter sent, and this is a horrible situation with your family, but I do believe you're going to have to pay your costs. I think you have a responsibility. And the magistrate's reasoning a 20% of the original fine, what if we do 20% of cost and add that on and add an extra $340 to it, which will do a 20% is an extra fine plus cost? So with her owing currently $1361, you know, we could add $340 to that, and she could owe $1701. It's almost a split. Commissioner Barfield?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the $4186, that's three times what our cost of doing this enforcement was. That, to me, I understand the magistrate takes everything, and I know how they work, and he's doing his or her job the way they should. But the point is, when we have to look at each individual and we look at, okay, we're going to do three times what the actual cost was, I think that's way overboard. I think we're going to do 20% above. I'll give in a little bit. We do 20% on top of what the cost was? Okay. But when you look at three times, I just think that's too much.
Well, let me just weigh in from the other point of view. My point of view is that we have rules and regulations for a purpose, and the purpose is to get people's attention and to regulate this type of situation. When we have an individual that says that they were not aware of it and the information wasn't delivered, or for whatever reason, we don't know what that is, that leaves us kind of out of the loop. We don't have more information than that. But the magistrate does, and the purpose of the magistrate, as I said before, is to look at these situations, look at the reasons behind whatever's going on, and come up with a determination. Do they... Are you suggesting they just use a cookie cutter approach and they just come up with a number? Or do they have reasoning for their...
If I can't... I'd like to ask Tad, what was the violation?
The violation was for work without a permit for the construction of garage doors and headers.
The headers around the garage door?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's going to cost a $4,000 permit for that because they didn't do that. It's probably more than what the job cost. Just wanted to add.
Well, and it's a good point. Again, we have rules and regulations to cover these type of situations, and you're required to get a permit, and so...
I would say $1,000, $1,300 is going to be a big bite to this young lady, too.
Well, it is. But going forward, and I'll just play devil's advocate here, going forward, where do you ever draw the line? Because everybody has a reason that we could say, let's just do the bare cost, and we do that quite a bit. But... So I'm asking you, if that's what we're going to do in the future, going forward, why even go through this dog and pony show of having special magistrates and people look at the numbers and having permits? Because I can tell you, I have a situation in my neighborhood where a guy owns a house across the street from me, totally in disrepair. It's been accruing, I think, a $25 daily fine since November two years ago. He lives in Tampa. He's never received his notice because the notice goes to the house, the physical location of the house. I've given staff his address in Tampa Bay, in Tampa. They've sent it to him. He's still done nothing. So at some point, he's going to be coming before this board, whether it's while I'm here or someone else, and he's going to stand up here and he's going to have $14,000 or $20,000 accrued. And he can say, well, you know, I never received the notice and I wasn't aware, and so I'm just saying, going forward, how do we handle a situation like that?
Ma'am, do you live in the house? My point is this, each one we have to look at individually. This is the headers around a garage. We have ones that come in where there's total added on to another extension on their house, or they do major things like that. You can't tell me they didn't know they were supposed to get a permit. I mean, you do plumbing, you do electrical. It's common sense. You're going to have to get a permit. It's a safety reason.
And roofing.
Yep. So I... You know, I'll give a little bit, but I still think this is a case where we shouldn't go, you know, much more than, if we're going to, much more than what the actual cost was enforcing. And we may end up with a tie here, and it comes up again. I don't know, but that's just where I'm coming from.
Well, and I'm with you. I feel terrible. Your husband did this, I assume?
I divorced him in July.
I'm sure you didn't do that.
Well, that says a lot.
I have... I lost my homestead because of the change of address when my son moved out. I had to pay for this divorce. I have roof damage for... I can't...
So, Madam Chair, what was your recommendation?
I think we have to cover a cost. I've always believed that. And if we're going to the theory, the magistrate's 20%, and I'm not sure, it got up to $14,000. And if what you're saying's correct, I mean, it could have gotten up to a lot more than that because she just wouldn't have known. And she divorced her husband. So I was thinking 20% on top of cost, you know, might be something that's...
Okay, I'll go with that.
...a remedy. Commissioner Tobias?
I would like to potentially table this. There's a reason boards generally don't have even numbers, and, you know, I think that, judging from the past, the commissioner that didn't have the opportunity to be here today generally favors the lower end of things. And I would make a request that we table this until the October 4 meeting, and we make sure during that time period that Ms. Felipe did not have any more accrual of fines. And I think that once we got another female perspective, we would see that it would end up a heck of a lot closer to the actual cost than any arbitrary number of 20% or 30%. So I'd like to make a motion to... Madam Chair, may I ask the applicant if they would mind? We have one board member who is absent. Would you mind coming back, who generally, on her past performance, more often than not, sides with the applicant? Would coming back October the 4th to readdress this cause any concern to you if during the period between now and October 4th there were no more accrual of fines? Would that be a problem for you, Madam?
Am I still accruing fines?
No.
No?
We'll put a...
Yep.
No, it won't. I mean, I'll come October...
I'm sorry. What was the question?
It's not accruing fines now, anyways.
No, it's not. It's in compliance.
Okay, so I have a motion on the table to... A motion on the floor to table. Do I have a second? Okay, motion dies for a lack of a second. Commissioners?
Yeah, I want to see this lady have this thing gone. I don't want her to have to deal with it for another two or three weeks. She needs to get on with her life without this hanging over her head. So I'll go with the recommendation of Madam Chair, since she's the lone female on the board.
Okay, I have a motion for $1701, which is what's left, plus 20%.
Is that minus than the $350?
Yes, sir. It would be $1711 times 20% is $340.
Okay.
So that was $340.
Okay. I'll second that.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Pass this 3-0, ma'am. It was a good reduction for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry, pass this 3-1. Tobias, trying to slip you in there, Commissioner Tobias. All right, we're on item J-2.
J-2, this is a request for the board to consider a special magistrate's reduction of an accrued fine from $3,225 down to $1,660 and release the lien upon a payment in full for code enforcement case 15 CE 01785 at 1528 Clear Lake Court, Cocoa, Florida. This is also for a work without permit.
Thank you, sir. Ms. King, if you would state your name and address for the record.
Karen King, 1528 Clear Lake Court.
Yes, ma'am. Would you like to address this?
Yes. I would just like to say that I was in the... I had a heart attack, and then... My husband's 88 and has Alzheimer's, and I had a heart attack, and then I had two total hip replacements, and I was not aware. I thought I took care of all the fines, and I got Steve Costner to do the engineering, and I got the fence taken care of, everything that Mike Verossic, I think his name is, V-E-R-O-S-T-I-C. I thought I took care of everything. I even spoke to him, and he said I did. And then I got this letter that said that my fine had $25 a day since a certain date, and then I went in with $3,225. Because of the last heart attack I had, I only had $6.63 at the end. We're in bankruptcy at the end of the month, and I just don't see how I can pay this outright or even scrape up $20 a month to pay it till it was paid off. So that's my case.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the formula that we arbitrarily used last time would work against this applicant, and that's another reason why I think that we probably should, more often than not, go with the special magistrate. This one being the actual cost is $1,565. The special magistrate is only 90, whatever, $95 more at $1,660. So if we were actually to take actual cost and add 20%, like the last time, we would then be recommending a fine higher than what the special magistrate had recommended. So my motion would be to accept the special magistrate recommendation of $1,660, which is a reduction of the actual fine of $3,225, Madam Chair, and that would be my motion.
Okay, sir. Let me ask you one more time because I was doing math while you're doing it. So you want to go with $3,225?
No, no, Madam Chair. That's 60-60, which is the magistrate recommendation. I don't want to use the formula that we arbitrarily used last time because that would be more than what the magistrate had suggested.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I would second that, which reaffirms my point. The magistrate in each of these cases looks at the situations and knows all the circumstances and comes up with a number. And in this particular case, came up with a number of $1,660, so I would second that.
Okay, Commissioner Barfield?
Yeah, I have a question. First off for you, ma'am. Were these were licensed contractors you were using to do this work?
As far as I know, I was in the middle of hip surgery.
Okay. And it sounded like you had an engineer draw it up?
I just... Yeah, Kevin, Steve Costner.
Okay. I have a question for Tad.
I mean, I did... But that was after the fact.
Okay.
Because I was fined...
Who did the work?
Davis's. They're licensed contractors, Davis, Daniel, and Eric.
Okay, so I have a question for Tad then. So if a licensed contractor is doing this, do they look to see if it's permitted to do the work, or they just go... What is the requirement?
The requirement is for the work to be done with a permit, whether you're a contractor or not.
Or an individual.
In this case, it looks like the contractor did not pull a permit to do the work. That happens on occasion, and when that does happen and the work's been done and we haven't had a chance to go out and do the proper inspections, then we require an engineer certification.
Is there any fallback for the contractor?
I don't know that the... I would imagine that the contractor was cited for the work without permit and through the contractor licensing citation process, but I don't have that information in front of me.
I would agree with going with the lower amount with the magistrate. Commissioner Tobias, honestly, I would have just gone with cost on both of them, but I was trying to negotiate something up here we could do. So I would be in agreement with the magistrate's of $1,660. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'll go with the motion to accept the special magistrate's recommendation of $1,660, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second, sir.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass this 4-0. Pass this 4-0.
So, I can't pay this. I don't have credit cards or anything. Is that, do you make arrangements so that I can do?
We can absolutely do that.
$20 a month or something like that?
Yes, ma'am. If you give me a minute, I can get with you and we can get that, that set up for you.
I'd like to ask a question too. This is just along this line. If we have permit that's not pulled, contractor is supposed to have done it. He gets cited, he gets fined, I guess?
Yes, sir. He gets fined through the contractor licensing enforcement.
Okay, so then we, the owner gets called for permit violation, didn't have a permit. So, they get fined too. So, are we double dipping here on this or what?
I don't know that, I don't know that, that side of it, but I could certainly see the concern and we can look into that.
Okay.
In, in the future. I, I don't know the particulars from that standpoint in this particular case. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to, I would like to comment on that also. I think that's a good point, Commissioner Barfield. Because I know we have the contractor licensing board and I do know that they find these guys and/or they can punish them in other ways as well. But, you know, if these guys are putting customers at risk by not pulling permits that they know that they should be doing. And people should be aware that they need permits, but I can tell you, most people don't. They hire somebody that's legitimate and they think that they're getting the work done legitimately. I don't know. I think that that's something that we should look at, that, and I don't know how we do that. Maybe, maybe Eden could.
Wouldn't the individual be able to go after the contractor then for damages? We can take a look at the process and see how it can be amended if, if we are in fact double dipping.
Just along, if I may, just quickly along that line of discussion. When, when we have a contractor that typically continually violates a, a, a code or does not pull permits, then we typically will go to the contractor licensing board and remove their permitting privileges. So, that has happened and, and that's our, that's been our practice.
And I'm aware of that, but my concern is that we're, I don't, I don't think that you could call it we're double dipping, but there, it just doesn't feel right. So.
Understood, and we can take a look at that.
Thank you. Mr. Bate?
Commissioner for item J3, staff is requesting that we pull that item. There was a notice issue on this and we will bring it back at a future board meeting.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to table?
Oh, you're just pulling it, right? To table it?
Right, we'll pull it and bring it back at a future meeting.
Okay, item four.
Good morning. It is requested that the Board of County Commissioners approve the tourism Phase 2 Capitol Facilities projects, $500,000 for the Merritt Island National Wildlife Community Conservation Education Center, and the 10 million multi-year agreement between the county and Brevard Zoo for the Indian River Lagoon Conservation Campus and Aquarium. On July 25th of this year, the TDC unanimously approved these two priority projects for funding and recommend approval from you, our Board of County Commissioners. It is understood that the TDC must approve the complete final project package prior to disbursement of any funds. Projects must commence construction by September 18th, 2020, or funding is withdrawn. Timeline for the $500,000 cash reimbursement for the Wildlife Community Center is expected to be in January of 2019. And the 1 million multi-year grant agreement between the county and Brevard Zoo will be over eight years with 1,250,000 paid annually. Again, no money is dispersed until all secured matching funds, final master plan, financial statements, and compliance with the tourist development tax statute is included and verified. Both of these projects have been reviewed and analyzed by a third party, market feasibility advisors, and they have been determined that both projects will advance impact, generate, and promote tourism as well as economic impact into the county. Both projects have been reviewed by the county attorney's office and are deemed eligible for funding with tourist development tax revenue under both Florida law and the county code. We seek your approval to move this forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Smith, your light is on, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to be clear. Are any of these funds coming from individual property taxes?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have many comment cards, so I'm going to call public comment. Mr. Philip Stasic, you're first. And Gail Meredith, you'll be next, ma'am, if you'll come towards the front.
Madam Commissioner and fellow commissioners, thank you so much. I should say Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. It's great to speak with you today on behalf of the proposed Indian River.
Did you give your name for me?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Phil Stasic, North Merritt Island.
Thank you.
It's great to be here to talk to you on behalf of the Indian River Lagoon Campus and Aquarium. I think that this is a magnificent concept, a wonderful project. I can speak to the quality and effectiveness of the Brevard Zoo's programs from personal experience. My wife and I have been annual pass holders and supporters of our zoo almost from its start. It's now an important part of the fabric of our community. And six years ago, I got involved in the joint UCF Zoo program to restore the oyster population in our beleaguered lagoon. I think I've actually spoken to you folks about that once or twice. And I've really enjoyed being a part of a small army of volunteer citizen scientists that have worked year-round to build oyster mats and bags and habitats and deploy them in the mosquito lagoon and the Indian River and the banana river as well. We've grown oysters and worked to reestablish them across the Indian River Lagoon. Now, over the years, the oyster restoration program has grown and flourished with your support. Now is the time for all of us to support our zoo's plans for the Indian River Lagoon Conservation Campus and Aquarium, not only to expand the oyster restoration plan, but to educate and inspire the public and our school kids as well about the importance of our beautiful Indian River Lagoon estuary. Now, this is good for tourism. It's good for the port. It's good for the lagoon. And it's good for schools. This is a win-win project. I'm excited about it. I hope you are too. This is really actually, potentially something that can really revitalize tourism in our community. And I think it's, it's really, really something that I'm looking forward to being involved in as a volunteer. Again, please support our zoo's IRL Conservation Campus and Aquarium. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gail Meredith, Brent Peoples, you'll be next, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Gail Meredith from Satellite Beach and the Brevard Indian River Lagoon Coalition, Thank you so much for all the work we're doing on the lagoon. I know that each of you has gone through a lot about it. And it's very exciting to be part of a community that's actually facing our problems and doing something about it. And I know that each of you have, have done a lot. This project, I think, is the natural outcome of what we've been doing. Some people have said to me, well, all that money and doesn't the lagoon need it? And of course it does. But I say to them, the lagoon needs billions, not millions. And we have to keep this going for decades. We have to engage our community and teach the children. Right now, the children really aren't learning conservation to the degree they need to. And we can't see in the water, to see the things in the water very well. And I'm so excited for the aquarium to be able to see what's in there, in the lagoon. And I think one of the biggest problems we have is our children are not involved with nature, even here in this beautiful place. And I think the conservation campus in the aquarium has tremendous potential to involve our children, to teach them, to raise money for our community and give us a real four-sided view of, of what we're doing, sustainability, and teaching people how to care for things. Which is, I think, as we've been hearing this morning about the grass clippings and all this stuff, it is one of the biggest problems we have. And unless we have a big project like this we can all focus on, we're not going to have a way of engaging people. So, I'm very excited about it and I thank you all for your support and look forward to working with, with the community on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Peoples, Mr. Overfelt, you'll be next, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. Brent Peoples, 1437 Pineapple Avenue in Melbourne. Here as, on representing the Melbourne area Regional Chamber of Commerce, I'm the current board chair. And just want to say a few words in support of these projects. I'll be brief. There's a lot of comments. There, obviously, they're going to attract a lot of visitors to our, our county. It's going to showcase the, the beauty of, of our county. It's going to keep visitors that do come here, they're going to stay longer in our county. There'll be educational components, as we were talking about, the grass clippings earlier. There'll be educational components so that both locals and visitors can learn about the Indian River Lagoon. And lastly, financially, there'll be jobs created, there'll be more room nights, and it'll drive additional tourist tax revenue. So, appreciate your support of the projects. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Overfelt?
Keith Winston, you'll be next, sir.
Mr. Overfelt, are you here? Okay, Mr. Winston? Chris Wallace, you'll be next. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. Keith Winston, Brevard Zoo and also a resident of Vieira Rockledge, depending on which side of the road I stand on that day. You know, I come here today with my Brevard Zoo hat on, but I really actually want to wear a different hat, which is as a citizen of Brevard County, I've had the honor of raising my family here. Two of them are out of the house employed as of yesterday. Very excited about that. And I love this community. You know, I've been through this community 14 years. I've seen it go through bad times. I've seen it come back through great times. And we have much to be proud of here. We have a booming economy. I always talk about our three ports, the spaceport, the seaport, and the airport, the diversity of industry, natural resources like nowhere else I've been in Florida. I'd rather take people wildlife watching here than anyplace else. So, we have so much going for us. We've also invested in ourselves. We've invested in a tax on ourselves to clean up the lagoon. And yet, I find all the time, because of our geography, because we're 70 miles long, we tend to focus on the negatives and not the positives. And I can go on all the wonderful economic reasons we've proposed this, but really, the reason for me that matters the most is I feel like we need that front porch on the lagoon. I feel like as a community, we need a place for people to gather, get that information. Previous speakers addressed beautifully the need to stop the grass clipping, but also I was impressed with the earlier speakers about the development in South County, talking about the need for sewer. That has become part of our DNA. And so, what excites us about this project, obviously, dream of a lifetime to build a lagoon that talks, an aquarium that talks about what we have here. But really, it's the chance to get this whole community together, to put that front porch in place where everybody has that view on the lagoon, understands what we can do for our water system. So, we're excited about those possibilities. I'd also just point out that 25 years ago, the zoo came online. We opened 25 years ago next year. And to this day, I hear from so many people in the community, two things. They say that was like the most fun we ever had in the community was building the zoo. It got people together. And they also said, we never thought it would make it. And so, we entered this project understanding those two factors. This is a heavy lift. It is going to take the whole community to do it. And I welcome this two-year deadline for these funds to make sure we lift fast as well as heavy. At the same time, I think it's another opportunity to bring our whole community together because I don't think we spend enough time talking about all the good things we have here and all the positives come out. So, I love the project for so many reasons. Obviously, we're proposing it. But for me, the most exciting all is the chance to get our community together around this amazing opportunity we have in conjunction with the county, the port, so many other players out there, the universities, all the people doing work on the lagoon. So, I thank you for your support and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wallace and Ms. Waters, you'll be next, ma'am.
Good morning, commissioners. Craig Wallace, Tortoise Island, Satellite Beach. I'll just echo everything that Keith said. But first of all, I'm speaking as a resident. I've, this is my third year in Brevard County. And I have learned so much through the things that the zoo has done. One of the first things I do when I bring my grandchildren into, into our home is say, who wants to go to the zoo? And they all raise their hands and say, they've been there at least five or six times in this two and a half years we've been here. And, you know, we, each time we go, we, we see new things. The zoo is what, one of the things that exposed me to, the programs that I've been involved with in, in supporting the lagoon, the oyster gardening program. And just everything they do is top-notch. So, I'm moving to, towards the aquarium. Aquarions have always been, you know, have, had a warm spot in my heart for being able to show us what we can't see from the surface, what's going on under the water. And it's so important to, to support that as part of the educational process for getting people more knowledgeable, more informed on why we're supporting, why, why are we spending this half-cent sales tax to support the lagoon? And I think this is a key gateway to, to doing that. So, I really support this and I hope you'll, you'll agree with me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Waters? Ms. Thompson, you'll be next, ma'am.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for hearing this. I'm Marilyn Waters. I live in Vieira and I've lived in Brevard County for over 30 years. The Indian River Lagoon is such a huge draw for people to live here, to stay here because they love to go boating and fishing and paddle boarding and everything else on the lagoon, as well as the economic benefit that it brings to us in a way that for the most part is enriching to the lagoon. Whether it's the people who do the fishing charters off of the, the cruise lines that come here, or the people who do boat tours, or the restaurants that we have. And the realtors see a lot of value in that. So, to me, it's one of those rare instances where the, the environmental feeling that people, people have from living here is consistent, whether you're a resident, whether you have a business here, whether you were a visitor here, it all seems to really come together in a very powerful way. And I think it's important to keep the importance of valuing restoring and maintaining the lagoon in front of big decisions like this. Because the thing about creating this conservation center with the aquarium and what's being done with the wildlife center is that it's a permanent facility. It's a reminder that will always be there about how much we as a community value the natural environment that we have here, but also for people who are coming in here. I do volunteer at the Brevard Zoo and it's surprising to me how many people do their excursion from the cruise ships to come to the zoo. And they're very interested in what we have here and how we value that. I think this is consistent with our reputation as a community that really values what we have here. And by showcasing that to newcomers, to visitors, et cetera, I think that way, if we run out of money for an education campaign about the lagoon, we will still have that facility there. And so, it's a permanent reminder. And I think having it at the port is a perfect place because the port has grown so much over the past 30 years in such a positive way that it really is becoming a destination of its own. And this, to me, is the kind of tourist attraction that melds with the community. It's not like we're bringing in something where we're running, you know, race cars around a track, making noise, you know, 10 months out of the year. But it really feels like the fit is just what we need. And I'm very pleased and honored that the Tourist Development Commission is backing this and sees this as a really valuable asset to our community. So, thank you for your consideration and I hope you support this.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Thompson, Mr. Ferry, you'll be next, sir.
Good morning. I'm Lorley Thompson from MIMS. And we've been working on this for, going on three years now. So, it really feels good to see it coming, coming to hopefully completion. I'm not going to take a lot of time explaining about the benefits of these two projects because they're pretty obvious. All I'm going to say is that tourism is a $2.1 billion business in this county. Our maritime commerce is $1.3 billion. So, these two assets will help improve the economic impact of, of those two industries. And all of that, tourism combined, or tourism contributes 30 percent of the taxes for the Save the Indian River Lagoon projects. And so, anything we can do that can increase tourism is going to increase more money for the lagoon. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms., Mr. Ferry, Mr. Connet, you'll be next, sir.
Good morning. My name is Chris Ferry. I live at 2920 Las Palmas Drive, Titusville. I'm here to talk about the Community Conservation Education Center exhibit project that was just mentioned by the, the TDC. I'm president of the Merritt Island Wildlife Association, which is a volunteer group, a nonprofit friends group that supports the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that manages the 140,000-acre Merritt Island National Wildlife Refuge on NASA's Kennedy Space Center property located in north Brevard and southern Volusia County. We have over the 140,000-acre Merritt Island National Wildlife Refuge on NASA's Kennedy Space Center property, located in North Brevard and Southern Volusia County. We have over a million visitors every year to the refuge. We're the seventh-most-visited refuge in the entire United States. There's 566 refuges. We're very blessed to have that. We also generate over $60 million in economic benefit for the local communities. In 2013, an engineering assessment was done of the current visitor center at the Merritt Island Wildlife Refuge and found that it had structural deficiencies, as well as, with a significant number of visitors, it was not adequate to support the visitors and the educational-environmental program that is so key to the education of our students. We turn away students every year, and we have a very robust program that we're very proud of, and we'd like to make sure that we can accommodate all the desires of the educational community. The new visitor center that is going to be built will be called the Community Conservation Education Center, and it's being funded by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service through deferred maintenance funds. The determination was made by the Fish and Wildlife Service that using deferred maintenance funds that cannot fund the exhibit project, and Fish and Wildlife asked our nonprofit if we would do a major fundraising activity to support those exhibits. As Laurlee pointed out, we've been at this for several years, and on April of last year, we came to your commission board and presented our project and unanimously approved a proclamation that supported this project. You also encouraged us to go out and talk to the community and encourage the community to come visit the refuge and support this program. And I'd like to give you an update on how we've been doing since that time. We've received proclamations, resolutions, and letters of support from 13 city councils and chambers of commons throughout Brevard County and Volusia County. As pointed out, the Brevard Tourism Development Council unanimously approved our project and grant recommendation for $500,000 in July. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has completed the conceptual design and wetland delineation, and has the permitting process in process for the new visitor center. Our association has raised over 60% of the funding required for the $1.4 million project in cash and grants. These exhibits are going to enhance the visitors' understanding of the refuge's wildlife, the management activity, and recreational opportunities for the communities. The centerpiece of the exhibit project will be the Indian River Lagoon Experience Theater, which will focus on the Indian River Lagoon system, its history, and the recovery. As we look at the Indian River Lagoon system, 129 miles of shoreline in the refuge, and 50,000 acres, or 22% of the Indian River Lagoon system, exist within a refuge. We're very sensitive to the lagoon, as been pointed out by many of the presenters, and we certainly want to include that as a keynote and primary exhibit in the exhibit project. We'll be glad to answer any questions you have about our exhibit project, and appreciate your consideration of approving our grant for $500,000. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kottneck and Mr. Lund, you'll be next, sir.
Good morning. Lou Kottneck. I live in Melbourne. Thank you for having me here, and thank you for the work you're doing on the lagoon and the considerations here. I'm speaking in support of the IRL Conservation Campus and the aquarium. I like the idea, the overall concept, the proposal. And I think we're all aware of the effectiveness of the zoo here in this community and its activity and involvement with the lagoon. One of the thoughts that I had was, it's really worth considering some of the successes of other aquaria and their instructive use in other communities. And there are a whole bunch of them, you know, from the Shedd, you know, Atlanta, and so on and so forth. Tampa, for example, the Florida Aquarium, just across the state here, with their scuba panorama that gives people the ability to kind of see what it is to go down, even if you're not certified. And the two-acre outdoor kids panorama, which again is actual physical involvement. Educations for tops, education for kids, homeschool programs that give that education, and their role now in educating and fighting against the red tide. Another example is the Monterey Bay Aquarium. We use the term here, I guess, as the front porch on the bay, or rather, the front porch on the lagoon. And that is effectively what they have there in Monterey with the bay. And really, a field laboratory resource for research and development protection of the bay out there. Then stepping back, and you've heard this from other speakers, but thinking about the community and our future here, we're moving initial steps with the referendum funding to restore the lagoon. We have the Kennedy Space Center, which is obviously an enormous draw and resource to the community. We have the cruise industry, which is growing. And so the aquarium, I think, represents a natural reinforcement of this kind of synergistic benefit that we have, that we're blessed to have here in this community. So I see us making this investment and really helping to continue to build a sustainable and economically vibrant community here. So I hope you'll support the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Captain Lund and Sarah Hodge, you'll be next, ma'am.
All right, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of both these plans. Probably the world's best-known zookeeper, Jack Hanna, has a saying, "Touch the heart, teach the mind." And as a journalist and communicator that has spent most of his life on this lagoon, that's one of the two biggest challenges that we have here, is communication and education. And I believe both of these facilities would go far in getting that message out. I just had the opportunity to return from Philadelphia, where I was on assignment, and visited the Philadelphia Zoo, the first zoo in the United States. It pales in comparison to the Brevard Zoo. I really do believe that Keith Winston and his team had the opportunity, and we're uniquely poised, to develop a world-class tourism destination, or tourism site, as well as a world-class conservation and teaching site. So I would like to ask you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Sarah Hodge, Mary Hilberg, you'll be next, ma'am.
I'm Sarah Hodge, North Merritt Island, and I just wanted to say that I support everything that's been said so far, and thank you for considering this. I did have a little concern about the taxpayers having to pay, and so thank you, Commissioner Smith, for pointing out that it is not being considered for real estate property tax. So I think that'll get a lot more people on board. So thank you so much, and this is a wonderful idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Hilberg, Bill Hilberg, you'll be next, sir.
Hello, I'm Mary Hilberg, 3780 Sierra Drive in North Merritt Island, and I'm just here to support this effort. This is a wonderful idea. It augments our revenues, it augments our tourism, it augments the profile of the community, it makes us look like we're who we really are. And I hope that you all will consider passing it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That's the last of the comment cards. I'm going to close public comment. Commissioners, do we have discussion? Commissioner Tabaya.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just have one question for Ms. Bentley, if that's okay.
Please.
Thank you. Ms. Bentley, complicated question, simple answer. If we were to amend county ordinance to allocate funding for the construction, repair, maintenance, and operation of lagoon infrastructure projects designed to prevent catastrophic pollution of the lagoon, and follow the requirements set forth in Florida Statute 125.01045, Section A 6, such as funding 30% of the project from other sources, 2, approving the project by a supermajority vote, and 3, performing an independent professional analysis demonstrating the positive impact of infrastructure projects on tourism-related businesses in the county, would we, the county commission, then be able to use these $10.5 million on infrastructure projects related to the lagoon upon a recommendation of the TDC?
Yes, provided there's a 40% allocation to advertising and marketing.
Thank you.
Commissioners, what you're asking is if we did an amendment so that the TDC came in with a recommendation, we'd be allowed to accept a recommendation for the lagoon?
Madam Chair, there are a few more conditions. There would be, as explained here, there would have to be an ordinance change, there would have to be a supermajority vote. So there are certainly multiple conditions that must be met, but my question was, can we spend these $10.5 billion on sewers, septic to sewer? And, you know, I left out the 40%, but short of that, it sounds like it's a yes.
Okay, so you're just asking if there's an ability, perhaps, to make a change so that we could have that option?
If the board decide to do that, the TDC decides to do that, which, yes, that was my question, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Smith.
Well, I think that was a good question from Mr. Tabaya. But I would note that, as I understand the ordinance as it stands, the TDC has to come to us with a recommendation. It's not up to the Commissioners to dip into the TDC pot of money. It's, they're responsible for directing how the money is spent, and if they come to us with that idea, then we could follow through and say yea or nay. Certainly, we could put that bug in their ear, but it still has to come from them. But I wanted to speak to the issue at hand. I think the impact of the aquarium and this plan, I think it has many, many benefits. It broadens the public knowledge, and it broadens the public awareness of the lagoon. And I think that's crucial, because the more people that care and know about what's going on with the lagoon, I think the better off we're all going to be in getting the lagoon restored. It's going to take an awful lot of effort, it's going to take an awful lot of money, and with interest and awareness, we can move that forward, because more people start taking care of and worrying about the lagoon. Knowledge and awareness, it's important, obviously, for protecting the lagoon as well. It will also bring in more tourists. This aquarium and the interest that it creates will bring in more tourists, and of course, that increases tourist revenue, and that tourist revenue can then be used for the So I'm really interested and excited about the fact that I think it can vastly increase the tourist tax dollars. And with the increase in tax dollars, I think everybody benefits, and particularly, the lagoon benefits. And again, I want to reiterate that this isn't property tax money. This isn't Brevard residents' money going to any of these projects. Unless one of our residents spends a night in one of our hotels or motels in this county in the course of a year, not one penny of Brevard County taxpayer money goes into this lagoon or this project. And I think that's extremely important for people to understand, because a lot of people like to, either through ignorance or through intent, try and make it look like property taxes, your property taxes, are being used for these projects. And it is not true. And I think it's incumbent upon our elected officials and our news organizations to make that very, very, very clear. So I'm very much in favor of this project.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Barfield?
It's interesting how many different aspects of the Indian River Lagoon comes up before this board. But let's remember, we taxed ourselves a half-cent sales tax for $40 million a year to put towards the lagoon. We've also, this county commission has approved over $130 million in sewer replacement, in sewer lines, sewer infrastructure replacement. What's lacking is the education side. And this is something, there's education, but this hands-on education, where you can actually see and touch and understand what our community is about, is very important. There's no other way to do it except through the zoo and through aquarium. So with that, I move for approval for Phase 2 of the Tourist Community Development Capital Projects Proposal. And specifically in my motion, it also includes approval for funding with the TDC Capital Facilities Fund for the Merritt Island National Wildlife Community Conservation Education Center Exhibits, and a cash reimbursement at $500,000. And the Indian River Lagoon Conservation and Campus Aquarium, a $10 million multi-year grant agreement between the county and Brevard Zoo over an eight-year period, paying $1,250,000 a year. Most importantly, I want in my motion, both projects must commence construction by September 8th, 2020, or funding is withdrawn. No money is to be dispersed until all secured matching funds, final master plan, financial statements, and compliance with the TDC statute is included and verified. In addition, that's my motion, but most importantly, this starts the clock where this community has to step up and help to get this operation going. Madam Chair, that's my motion.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
I'm proud to second that motion, and I want to make a point. You raised an interesting point, Commissioner Barfield. When you and I, two years ago, were out, more than two years, two and a half years ago, when we were out at all the town hall meetings up and down this county, with Virginia Barker, educating the public about this half-cent sales tax that was proposed, we didn't advocate for it, we didn't advocate against it. It was an education process. We were trying to educate the people about what could be done with the half-cent sales tax, and it was up to them to decide whether they wanted to support it or oppose it, and they had that opportunity at the ballot box. The most often question raised, I mean, this was raised every single time, well, how do we know that if we vote for this, all the monies are going to go to the lagoon? Because we voted for so many tax increases over the last 10, 20, 30 years, that the money would somehow be diverted to other projects. And so that language was specifically written into that plan that we voted for, that the monies would not be used for anything other than the lagoon. So I want to make that extremely clear, that that's foremost on the people's minds.
Yep. Thank you, sir. I also am going to support this motion. I love living in a community that's lagoon-focused. Actually, we're very nature-focused, and I love these projects that are promoting nature and outdoor activities for people. I think that this is going to be a great inflow of tourism dollars, and the importance of that is the more tourists that come into the area, the more money they spend, the more money that goes into the lagoon projects, which I believe is the main reason we had a $40 million surplus the first two years that we're able to spend on the Indian River Lagoon. So as we invest in these capital projects, which I think is a great idea, because it takes the pressure off homeowners of trying to come up with all the taxes for all the projects, because we have the influx of money coming into our community, even more than tax dollars, it's providing revenue to the restaurants and people that have jobs and work. So I think it's just a great project, and I'm glad we're doing this. And I love the stipulations that Commissioner Barfield put on it, that we're going to do due diligence and, of course, watch over these dollars, because that's what we're supposed to do. I just want to throw out a kudos to the Playlinda Beach area. We have over 1 million visitors a year that pass through that area for the Merritt Island Wildlife Refuge, and we have a birding festival that has almost a quarter of a million people that show up every year to go out there and watch birds. So this is a pretty big deal of what we're investing in in the community. And other projects are great and wonderful, family tourism, but I think this is important, too, to have these types of venues ready to draw in the families and things to do and things to see. So I'll support this also. And on that note, I have a motion on the floor in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes.
Did you wish to include a finding that these projects will advance, impact, generate, grow, and promote tourism in the county?
Commissioner Barfield?
Please amend my motion to state that.
Does the second include?
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes 3-1 with Commissioner Tabaya in opposition. Thank you all. Thank you. Moving into public comment. I have one more item? Oh, it snuck right in there. I'm sorry, Commissioner Tabaya, I almost slipped right by you again. J-5. J. 5.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This resolution policy amendment applies requirements we already have in contracts for projects that use state and federal dollars. This applies it to the use of only county dollars. E-Verify is free. Many of the contractors effectively already comply because they are currently involved or have been involved in projects that use both state and federal dollars. This program includes free webinars and other training materials.
Mr. Tabaya, I'm sorry, just a second. Excuse me, we're in, can we take it outside for the communication? Thank you. I'm sorry, sir, go ahead, I want to listen.
No, no problem, Madam Chair. President Trump has said, quote, "This simple measure will protect jobs for unemployed Americans," and it's called for all employers to use E-Verify. As a point of reference, Brevard County uses E-Verify. Candidate and former Representative DeSantis said E-Verify ensures illegal workforce and disincentivizes illegal immigration in our state. Attorney General Jeff Sessions has said E-Verify should be required to, quote, "prevent corporations from hiring illegal workers and therefore undercutting employment opportunities for American workers." There is a common thread running through all of these statements. Being against E-Verify is being against law-abiding businesses and workers. So once everyone's done discussing, if there is, I would make a motion to approve the resolution and associated policy amendment as included in the agenda packet, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I have no cards to have discussion.
I would second that motion.
Okay, Commissioner Barfield.
I'm very familiar with E-Verify. My company, we use this quite a bit, we have to use it, but I'm just really amazed that Brevard County hasn't automatically incorporated this in because the state requires it and federal government requires it. I always thought we had this. I mean, I just assumed we had E-Verify, but I fully support it. I think it's the right thing to do, and I'm for it.
Yeah, I'm good with it, too. I asked if it was anything that we didn't foresee, and everybody seemed very comfortable with it. I think private businesses now also are supposed to do this after a certain amount of employees also. I know we have to do checks on individuals to make sure they're paying child support, so I think this is kind of a no-brainer. Commissioner Tabaya.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank you to Commissioner Barfield mentioning that why don't we do it if the federal government requires this and the state? And on those grounds, I will be bringing up local preference, which there, we have protectionism policies here in Brevard County that the federal government and the state government does not allow, but Brevard County does. So under those same grounds here coming in the future, I will be bringing that up. Thank you for bringing that to light.
Okay, so I have a motion on the table and a second. Second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes 4-0. Now we're at public comments. I have Mr. Bill Young. Mr. Young, are you here, sir? Okay, Mr. Charles Tovey.
Charles Tovey, 2555, Roberts Road, Melbourne. The third rail, finally found out what that means. I wanted to speak about the lagoon. The algae create a scenario for you. Someone has a medical issue, a financial issue, or a mechanical issue, and their pool goes to brown algae or any other kind of pathogens, and they have hundreds of gallons of this polluted water. They're in distress, don't know what to do with their pool water, so what do they do? The easiest thing which people might choose is to drain the pool. Where do they drain the pool? With all the brown algae and the rest of it, they drain it directly into the canal or the gutters, and that reaches a point, just like the fires over in California. You got one guy starting this huge massive fire, just like one pool. One pool being with pollutants being dumped into the lagoon. There's a hotspot of nutrients in a lagoon that just grows like wildfire in a lagoon, nonstop, as far as it can go, like a wildfire. I believe that we should make educational known to the pool owners as well as the landscapers and the lawn maintenance crews, that they all should take a voluntary test, or maybe not voluntary, take a test of where the effects of their professionalism and their jobs pertain to the health of the lagoon. I address grass clippings being blown on my property. It's a law that they need to be blown, and if part of the, a big part of the problem is the organics, what I call fiber. Fiber ends up in a lagoon instead of on people's property, and we spend our lives putting fiber into our property so we can have nice gardens, and then it gets eroded into the lagoon. Well, all of these, our lives are related, and I'm running out of time, seems to go fast, but sludge is not the problem. It's a symptom of the problem, just like the lagoon is a symptom of our actions. And I had to call the Coast Guard to come and take pictures of the excrement, a quarter-mile of excrement, and I called all the commissioners, nobody responded, so I had to call the Coast Guard. They came down because they're the people in charge of the lagoon, and the same way with the sludge. I got to go, and I'll continue, and sorry.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cole Panning? Mr. Panning, are you here, sir? Okay, I will close public comments, and we'll move into board reports. Mr. Abate.
Only one item. We'd look to have the board cancel the workshop that was scheduled September 20th. We don't have a topic for that workshop.
I have a motion to cancel the workshop.
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barfield, second by Commissioner Tabaya. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, passes 4-0. Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Thank you. Commissioner Barfield?
No report.
Commissioner Tabaya?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I have a couple things. I'm going to read a quick statement here. An article was published over the weekend in the Florida Today that I found to be disturbing. To be clear, Mr. Berman, the subject, not the journalism. In this article, individuals on an advisory board commented to a local reporter regarding the salary for an open position which county management is in the process of filling. I will not comment with my views on the specific matter as I find it unethical to interfere with this process, which is the purview of the executive branch of government. I will note, however, that the county has struggled with the best way to fund salaries at every level, even going so far as to order a salary study to identify disparities. Having appointees who should be acting in the best interest of the county, who happen to have a financial stake in the decisions the future employee will make undermines salary negotiations for a specific director-level position in the newspaper and is inappropriate, to say the least. Okay, a quick public service announcement. I went out last night and got a flu shot, so please go out and get flu shots. Your pharmacist now has the ability to provide them. And on a final note, and this speaks to the county manager, on Friday, I spent half a day with Mr. Terry Talbert, who is a building inspector, and he speaks well of, or he speaks very well for all county employees. The flexibility, the knowledge, and the caring that he had on behalf of all the folks that are out there trying to increase building across the county is immeasurable. He would constantly take phone calls from folks that were close to passing but not quite there, so they could make a quick amendment to save, you know, the $75 of a re-inspect fee. It was a wonderful experience to see how hard our county employees were working, and Mr. Talbert certainly is a good indication of some of the folks that we have out there. And unfortunately, my office has scheduled me with a lawn crew, so I will be out mowing lawns or doing that type of activity next Friday. The one thing I look forward to is meeting more of our wonderful county employees. You've done a great job, county manager, with perpetuating this culture, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith.
As, excuse me, some of you may have noticed, I have a pink shirt on, which really isn't noteworthy because I wear pink shirts all year round, because after all, real men do wear pink. And it's also a reminder, at this time of year, that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I'm honored to be, once again, the chair of that fundraising and awareness campaign, and I'm asking my commissioners, my fellow commissioners, and fellow Brevard County employees to join me, and whatever you can afford, I think almost every family has had or knows of someone that has had breast cancer, so it's pervasive. It's not just men either, it's men as well. So this is just an effort to eradicate the terrible disease that is breast cancer, and we're trying to bring as much awareness as we can. So if I can get my fellow commissioners and fellow Brevard employees to kick in some dollars, we can outraise what we did last year, which was, I believe, $52,000. That's my board report.
Thank you, sir. We will do, as long as you don't make us grow beards again. I was really bad at that.
That's an ex amount. That's November, that's no-shave November.
Okay. I did get my flu shot, Commissioner Tabaya. So gentlemen, you're on for that, too, and I have no other report than that, so I'll call this meeting adjourned.